Call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order and we'll, we just said the pledge will put that off and we do not have any additional agenda or consent calendar items to my knowledge. For delegations, if you'd like, if you're here to talk about the sermon here when we get to that item, if you'd like to come up and speak then, that might be better. So is that okay with Mary? Is that okay with Mary? March? Okay, good. Okay, and what we can do then is if there's no objection, since they are here, why don't we move that up to the unborn agenda? So anyway, we'll do that item first, but once we get to it, but the first thing will be, are there any other delegations before I move forward? Okay, moving on for the approval of the minutes of the April 19th, 2023 meeting?
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 19, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, corrections?
I had two, one of them being on page two of the minutes, and this would be under paragraph 2C, discussion about the Dominion building update. And after Mr. Siri spoke, and before Mr. Weber spoke, I asked a question. So I wanted to insert, after the sentence, the Yale Charret would also weigh in on the possible use of the building, add the sentence, Ms. Santoro asked if the Yale Charret is considering all options, private development as well as town ownership of the property. I just think that's a, that's kind of an important point to capture. And then that, your points, Bill, your questions followed from that, I think. And then, second, the last page, which is after our executive session, I just wanted to make sure, and this is on page five, it's number eight, next to the adjournment of paragraph, that after, you know, we went into executive session at 8:01, we returned at 8:13, and it should read, quote, "And no formal votes were taken."
Yeah, not approved unanimously because we don't vote.
Right. So I mean, there's this, our secretary is using the phrasing for when we vote on something, but I didn't want to give the impression there that we had voted on something in executive session.
Okay, because it always says no action taken.
Because it usually says, that's the usual motion that I, in fact, I went back to the tape and I did say it, so, okay. And that was it for me.
Okay, any other comments?
While you're on that same sentence there, not a big thing, but misspelled my name. We couldn't afford two Bs, we only had one.
Oh, yes.
And that never happens, correct, Bill?
Never, no. No, the carburetor's got two Bs, the grill's got one, so I'll take it either way. And also on page four, under ex officio reports, it said that, I said that the planning commission didn't approve it because it was inconsistent with the plan of development. I don't know that that's why they didn't approve it. My point was they didn't have enough information to approve it. So the reason why they didn't approve it, this may be correct, but I didn't say that.
No, I, you did not say that.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
That's typically why they don't approve or do approve things, but I don't, I don't know that that's why they said that.
Okay, we'll make sure that's taken care of. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes for the corrections noted indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. Moving on to consent calendar, it's a big one.
Yes, move to approve the consent calendar for the May 3, 2023 Board of Selectmen meeting in the amount of $554.55.
Is there a second? Okay, the second by Roseanne. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to skip over the old business and go to the item 3A, discussion, application on the ARPA appropriation for Fox Farm Cemetery. Roseanne, you asked for this item, so I'll let you speak to it.
Well, I think we have several members of the commission here this evening, and they are probably the best to address this, but I don't know if that got included in your, yes, in the back of your packet, which was on the table tonight, there are some pictures that were taken at the cemetery of the damage that is existing, fallen trees, the danger to existing stones, fragile stones. And so the request that's coming before us this evening is to see if we can use some of those funds in order to help cover the expense of the work that needs to be done and needs to be done immediately. And so I think the best people to talk further on this would be the members of the commission. I don't know who the commission designated to speak.
It's usually Mary, so, Mary, if you'd like to come up and give us your name and address, please. And pull down the mic, because I'll be getting texts from somebody saying they can't hear us.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Is that okay?
That should be good.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Siri, members of the board in residence. My name is Mary Cotillo. My address is 74 Fairhaven Road in Niantic. I'm here tonight as president of the Historic East Lime Cemetery Association. I have with me here tonight our town historian, Liz Cookta, a member of our group, John O'Neil, and Steve Allagood, who is vice president of our group. I last came before you in February of this year requesting that the town apply for a state grant from, that was entitled neglected cemetery account program, which was available for up to $5,000. We asked that the town apply for the funds to repair the stone wall at Max Mill Cemetery on Scott Road. We had an estimate of $7,000 to do the work, and we were fortunate that the town was granted the full $5,000 towards this project. We want to thank you so much for your efforts on our behalf. There are 16 cemeteries in East Lime which come under our care. Annually, we have the three largest and most visible mode, three to five times, always for Memorial Day, Fourth of July, and Labor Day. Volunteers rake, pick up trash, cut brush, and saplings at no cost to the town throughout the year. We have a small endowment, which we are very frugal with, so that it will enable us to fund projects for a long time to come. The town gives us 2,500 annually. While we're very grateful for this assistance, that money does not even cover the mowings, much less wall and stone repair. To date this year, we've already spent $2,000 for necessary tree and branch removal at Max Mill Cemetery that we could not safely remove ourselves. WJ Tree Service has done our cemetery work since 1989. Some of you may remember that Wes Jezerski was the town tree warden for many years, and presently his son runs the business. They have the equipment and the expertise to safely work around the old and fragile stones. Their prices are very reasonable, and we can trust that the work will be done in a timely manner. Supporting our local businesses is very important to us. We understand that there may be some unused funds left from the ARPA fund, which we would like to be considered as recipients of a portion of those funds. We have a situation at Old Fox Farm Cemetery on Upper Walnut Hill Road, which needs to be addressed immediately. There are a large number of dead and dying trees which need to be removed professionally. WJ Tree Service has identified and marked them and given us an estimate of $7,400. Earlier this year, a large tree fell on the wall there. Some of our members, one of our members has been able to cut it up. Luckily, it did not damage any of the stones. The trees which have been identified need to be removed for the safety of anyone walking or working in the cemetery itself, as well as the fragile stones. Old Fox Farm Cemetery is about 90 by 100 feet and contains 102 stones. Forty-five are marked with names and 57 are field stones. The earliest stone, marked stone is that of Ezra Moore in 1786. There are two veterans from the War of 1812 who receive flags on Memorial Day each year. I have submitted photos, and I have more if you'd like to look at them. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them or consult with my, the members present. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mary. Before we start discussing it, is there anybody that has any questions for Mary or anyone on the commission? Anne?
I do. Mary, thanks for your, for all the information. Would you know offhand the tax status of your, of your association? Are you a 501(c)(13) or a 3?
3, I believe.
You're a 3, and not a 13?
No, that's true. Right. So we are tax exempt.
Right. I realize that you're probably tax exempt, but I didn't know if you were, as a cemetery association, had had some other designation, not that you're aware of.
No, no.
Okay. Would that be a document that, that you could furnish, your, an IRS letter or something that shows that you?
Probably, yes.
Somewhere in here?
I will certainly, yes. I'll get to that, sure.
Thank you.
Okay, would you like my pictures?
If you want to pass them out here, I have the, I'm going to give this to the town clerk, so it'll be attached to our minutes.
Mr. Siri?
Yes.
Could I ask Anne what the difference would be? I'm not familiar with the two different types of registration.
Well, I'm no expert on it, but I do know with ARPA funding and the way our application went also, that nonprofits are defined as either 501(c)(3)'s or 501(c)(19)'s, which are veterans groups, the 19's are veteran groups, and 501(c)(3)'s is very broad, it covers a lot of categories. But there is a designation for cemeteries going back of, in, you know, beginning of the 20th century, and I believe it's for, so that they would be tax exempt, but I believe that designation is a, is a 13, not a 19. But just, the reason why I brought it up is, is just in terms of qualifying and being able to qualify for ARPA funding, we, that's, that's something that, I can't answer that legal question, you know, what, if you're something a little different, would, would you still be considered for funding under ARPA? But it, it was a very distinct point that, that was made in the regulations about what is a nonprofit. And then when we did our applications, when we, when we had open, sort of open season for nonprofits to apply, that, that information was in there as well, that a nonprofit was defined for purposes of the ARPA funding and receiving that as either a C3 or a C19. Yeah, okay, thanks, thank you.
Mary, do you need these photos, or can we hold on to them? Because I'll include them there, so. Okay, any other questions for Mary or members of the?
Yes, so, I guess I'm just kind of looking at, in our packet, photos, so I guess what trees would they be cutting down on?
Many of those, most of the ones you're looking at.
Most of them?
Yes, there's one that's four.
There are just so many, so that's why I'm just.
Yes, most of them are dead.
Okay.
And you can't, it's hard to tell from here.
Yeah.
The number of trees that are in there, and you have to list.
Yes, yes, I do.
How many does it have?
Most of them are dead, is that what they said?
Absolutely, dead.
Yeah.
There are a few, you know, with branches dead, which will be caught, but the trees themselves are just, they're.
Yeah, especially when they're dead. We had a tree in our own house just go down for no apparent reason, you know, all of a sudden in the middle of the day, oh my God. So yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you. Before we move on, I think that we need further clarification from Anne on this issue of the tax. And is, are you saying that they need to have both designations?
I'm just, it just, when I went back and looked at what is a nonprofit and, and being able to qualify to receive funding, that was, that was the particular, and Anne probably remembers this as well, in our application, that was the definition of a nonprofit. So, I mean, I just, if, if in the event that a nonprofit is not of that designation, a C3 or a C19, again, C19's are easy because you can remember that it's a veterans, you know, for veterans groups, then you wouldn't come under, under that, you wouldn't have the ability to receive funding. I mean, this is what I'm putting together. Again, I think that's something I think we need a legal opinion on. But that was just one issue, you know, there might be some other, you know, issues that the, that the board, you know, can also, will also address. Before we get to that point, I did have a question. Do any of the trees sort of, would, do they go over the right of way, or are they in a right of way so that, you know?
For the road.
For the road, or?
No, this, the cemetery sits 500 and some odd feet back from Upper Walnut Hill Road. 500-foot driveway and a grass lane between houses number 17 and 19 on Upper Walnut Hill Road. So it's way back, it is, can't possibly, a tree can't possibly fall near the road.
Into the, into the roadway.
No, but anyone walking around in the cemetery would be, yeah, all right.
So.
No, Anne, go ahead.
Sorry, I was going to ask, Kevin, did I, I wasn't sure if I heard you the other night saying you were going to have Joe McGough.
Well, here again, if it was going to be something that would be possibly near the right of way of the road, you know, we could look at it as a safety issue for, you would look into ever soars, but if it's that setting, that far back, it would not be something that town would maintain.
Okay. And then, one more question, I'm just kind of looking it up, Googling here. It says East Lime Cemetery Association. Is that what you're considering?
Historic East Lime.
So that's the, the East Lime Cemetery Association?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to see what I'm finding out. Okay, go ahead, Roseanne.
Go ahead, Roseanne.
I just want to make, I just want clarification for the commission as to what their next step should be. Should they look into applying for certification or tax exemption with these additional numbers? Or are you going to research this and then tell them?
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't personally research it. If we have a legal question as to the, as to their qualifying, then I think that would be for town council to figure out. I just happened to put that together because remembering the application we did and, and remembering the definition of nonprofit. And I did go back and look at the regulations and went back to look at the definition, and it hadn't changed either between the first version and the second version of, of the regulations that we all had to deal with. But there may be some other issues.
So it sounds like you need to have the IRS designation.
Yeah, I mean, just as a starting place, that would help. But that's, that's one issue, I think this is another.
Okay, you know, and here again, too, I think, Anne, and Anne, you were both on the ad hoc committee for that. And what was the, I know that's been dissolved, but was there a conclusion or as far as moving forward for further? I know everything we've done since then has been related to town-related items.
Yeah, so we've nev, we never, I don't think the board has ever voted on this. Sometimes we discussed it, but once we went through that process, when we opened it up to non-town projects, and we opened it up to the community, we, as a town, directed funding to either nonprofits or businesses. And as a nonprofit, you have to fit into that category I was speaking about. And that, that was an easy one because everyone fit into one, one or two of those. So, and then when it was all done, and we did our report, and the Board of Selectmen approved it, and the town approved, you know, we, we knew that somewhere down the pike, we would be reassessing, you know, the use of the funding, was there anything that wasn't used? Could we, do we have a little bit left? We actually appropriated everything but $5,000. And then since then, there's been little pieces here and there because something was saved, this kind of thing. We haven't done that total analysis. But at the time, the finance director, Anna Johnson, you know, said that at some point we would reassess. And, and then the question would become, would we take that, and it's just remainder money, it's not much, would we use that, where would we use that? And since we already set up a structure for the public's use of that money, and that time has passed, the question becomes, okay, do you do that again? Do you, if there's $20,000 left, are you going to open that up to the public again, or, or to have town departments utilize the funding? So it's a conversation that the board needs to have a little bit more in full and to, and to, you know, make a decision about, because there isn't much left. Because the whole idea of the application process was to be fair to all organizations, nonprofit and businesses, and to kind of have a timeline, they did, they had a definitive timeline within which to file. Because the feeling was prior to that, it was a little first come, first served perhaps, and this was in the early days of receiving ARPA funding, and no one was, it came with no instructions. How do you, you have this funding, now how are you going to, all the possibilities of using it, how are you going to, to do this? So we came up with the application process and the subcommittee, and we met for two months, and that's how that worked. So, so this is still, I think that's still an open question on the board to have that conversation. So those are just a few, a couple of impediments in my mind, but, but it doesn't mean that you're, you don't have a problem here and that somehow there's a solution and perhaps with town's help. And I guess you reminded us that you are on our list of, of organizations we give to on an annual basis.
Yes.
Right, so maybe that needs some reexamination.
Mrs. Cookta has something to add about the funding.
Elizabeth Cookta, 154 Pennsylvania Avenue, I'm the East Lime Town Historian. I do believe that we're a 501(c)(13), because I think I, when I wrote 501(c)(3) on something not, not big, just some piece of paper, I was writing it on, our treasurer corrected me to say that we weren't, a C3, we're 13, because we're cemetery, we come under that. Now, we also, if the town looks into the state regulations and that towns are responsible for cemeteries in their town, that's part of state legislation, so, so, you know, there's a couple ways to look at it. And, you know, these are, these cemeteries, I always tell the students when I meet them, I meet with the anthropology class twice a year, and I tell them, you're never really dead until nobody remembers you. And that's a very important thing, and that's what we try to do with all of these cemeteries, is to read the names of the people and let them know we don't forget them. And that's why we're very concerned about Fox Farm, because you can see the number of trees there.
Right.
And at least 60% of those, if not 75, are dead. And they're not little trees, they're not quite tall.
As maybe a recommendation, I don't think we really can take action on this tonight, for sure.
No, no, I understand that completely.
What I would recommend, here again, I have, I do have some concerns about ARPA money, because we're down to $17,093. If we made this allocation, it'd go onto 9,500, and the hope was to keep that for something unforeseen that would come up and that. But I think it warrants me sitting, getting in touch with you, having our finance officer, director talk with you. If it's something we have to maintain, we should look at addressing it, because right now, if it's a town responsibility, we do have the resources and the budget right now to handle this type of thing. So why don't we look at that? I'll have Kevin Gervais and Joe McGough get involved, too, because here again, we would need more than one quote, even regardless, we have to have more than one.
Certainly.
So I don't think we're not, I think the ARPA would be a much harder one, because who's to say another nonprofit would say, hey, wait a minute, we have much greater needs in that, and it affects a lot of people. And I think, and that wouldn't fit the time for all of us. Let me have us look at that, and if it's, and then give my office a call tomorrow, and let's, you and I sit down and talk, and we'll see what we can come up, or just by the phone, and we can do some research with town attorney to see, and if it is our responsibility, we can look at ways of addressing it as quickly as possible. Because 7,500, it wouldn't even require a town meeting, so we wouldn't have to spend a whole month going through several appropriations.
And, and you can see from that quote, and then the amount of work that he's going to do.
Oh, yeah.
He has always been.
The list is long.
Very, very, very good to us.
And knowing.
And he's caring about our cemeteries.
Knowing, knowing them, I'm not concerned, but purchasing policy does require that.
Oh, we understand.
But let's do that and see if we can go out from that aspect, too. So, and for you pointing that out, then I can have town attorney look into it, and we can move forward. And let's, I wouldn't table this, I'd say let's look for a different funding source if it's our responsibility to do that, and, and not in a long, and as expeditiously as possible.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mary.
Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone else?
No, I think you touched on the ones that I had, and if it's going to be a different source. This quote itself, I had some questions about how it's written up, but if we're going to get multiple quotes.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why these last couple of trees were down below the line? Were they like optional trees or something?
No, they're in the lane. They're in the, they have to come down so that the equipment can actually get into the cemetery.
Okay.
So it's a separate.
So those two don't have to come down because they're bad trees, they have to come down so the equipment can get in?
So you can get in.
And I don't think it would be a bad idea, even though it's 500 feet off the roadway, to have Joe McGough go down and take a look at something like this. He can give us a whole lot of info, because he's very good at that, so.
That's great.
All right, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for, Roseanne, for asking to be there.
Just wanted to say, too, we've had trees removed from my house. These are extremely, extremely good, yes.
I had, I had a large pine tree taken down.
Yeah.
It's a lot of dollars.
It was stickered. I mean, and then, but when you watch them do the work, it's amazing, so.
Yeah, exactly.
So do we want to move this, and?
No, we don't want to move this.
We don't want to move it at all.
What I, I want to do is, we'll bring it back from a different source, but, you know, definitely something will be an action item, but in a different sense, so. Okay, we'll go back to our, up to old business charter revision. It's really, this is a wonderfully good group of people from every aspect, too. They are going to have their final meeting on the 23rd. John, we've already taken action, so if you don't want to sit here and listen to us, you're all set. Okay, it passed.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, John.
Take care.
They kind of wrapped everything up yesterday. They're going to come back for one final meeting and try and put everything together to move, and this is on the 23rd, for a public hearing on June 6th. It's a Tuesday. Good new Monday, the 5th, because it conflicted with a Board of Ed, Board of Ed meeting. And then they're going to present the document to us on the 21st of June, present to the Board of Selectmen. Town Attorney will be here and explain what our steps are from that point. But they've done a really good job. Just to highlight a few of the things, they're going to recommend four-year terms for basically every elective office, first electman, Board of Selectmen, and they'll explain how to stagger it and so forth like that. They're not going to recommend any chief administrative officer, they figure that's something for either a Board of Selectmen, budgetary decision, so, and if it's in the charter, it's there forever. Vacancies, when a vacancy comes over on a commission, an elective commission, it'll be filled for the remainder of the term, not just until the next election. Well, the one we have now with, with Bill Dwyer, that would only fill to this, but if it was two years plus, that person wouldn't have to go for election now. Remove some of the appointments, they'll remove appointments such as constable, special constable, dog warden, those will be taken out of there, because we don't have those anymore. Then when you get into chapter five of it, they talk about, our assessor's a four-year term, our building official, our fire marshal, our building inspector are all four-year terms. They aren't now, they're hired and they're, you know, basically at-well employees. They're not union, but they're here for, you know, lengthy period of time. So those would not be, those would be, like they are now, administrative hires. Regarding referendums, the recommendation would be, if it's over a 5% increase, a 5% or greater increase over the previous year's budget, it'll go to referendum. If it's under 5%, then it could always be petition, you know, the, the town can do it, but if not, then it would be voted on at a town meeting. They're not recommending a bifurcation budget, not a separate one for town and Board of Ed, keep it one. That's what the recommendation is here, too. And here again, they said, well, is it a 5% increase in the mill rate, or is it a 5% in the budget? And they said, no, the, the budget, because the bud, the mill rate could drop, would revamp, but the actual increase to the budget could be, could be more than 5%, so they're. And the adjustment for dollars for, that require a special town meeting, they're, you know, basically, you know, and if it's a grant or something like two of the three items we did tonight, would not have to have come through a town meeting. And looking back over the past year, I think about half the town meetings would not have had, special town meetings would not have had to occur. You know, ones like, because I know with the ARPA money, I know that decision was made, that that would always go to a town meeting regardless, you know, which was what we did. Real estate transactions right now also say that if it's more than 10. Real estate track transactions right now also say that if it's more than ten thousand, it has to go to a, you know, special town meeting and so forth for approval, they're going to adjust that because right now, ten thousand would equate to almost ninety-six thousand dollars as to when that was adopted, to make it more, you know, in, in line with where it should be. And chapter eight was basically the chapter that was there when it was formulated and it all refers to how, you know, terms from the, I don't know, Water and Sewer Commission nineteen sixty-six, half will be, it basically talks everything from the sixties, so basically that whole chapter can go and there's one thing in it that says, you know, you can make amendments to the charter in accordance with state statute, we don't have to have that in the charter because state statute already covers that. So, they've done a lot of good cleanup work with that. And right now too, one of the things too is it says the budget will be on display in the first selectman's office, four days prior to the annual town meeting and so forth like that. It isn't anymore. And, you know, we'll just clarify, it'll be available in the town clerk's office or it's also on the website, there's so many other places it can be. So, they've done a really good job, I'm looking forward to what they brought to us. And, you know, and you think about Jeff McNamara, Jay Ginsberg has been a great member of that, there's just been so many people that have done a really super job in that, Mark Salerno and Jeff, you know, very, very good job. Any, any questions roughly on that? I mean, we'll have it obviously presented to us in a little over a month, but it's moving along.
Sounds like great progress.
It is, and, and we're well ahead of where we need to be, so that's the good point. That's a good point. And, you know, the town attorney will be here to tell us exactly what our steps are once we get the document handed to us.
And our date, Kevin, for a decision of Board of Selectmen is sometime in September?
It'll be, yeah, yeah, sort of, well, we want to have it before September first because then Wendy, because they're going to have to worry about the ballot, so they're going to need it right that time, so the quicker we do it there, actually, for in Wendy's case, if it's due on the seventh of December, I want to give it to her the sixth at eleven fifty-nine P.M. No, and that's just that we want to make sure, you know, and that's just, you know, they've been really on task because I know several years ago, the last one there, they got down to that last, it had to get rushed, which is, I think, why chapter eight is still in there. Anyway, moving on, I just gave a little printout because this is what's going to the town meeting next week. I don't know if anybody saw, and Elizabeth Regan really did a quick job, but she put the wrong numbers in her first article in the paper and it had us up hold. And she did, and fortunately Kevin Gervais happened to see it and got ahold of her, she immediately corrected it and so forth like that. But this specifies, you know, basically, you know, where we are, you know, the overall budget, the overall, what the mill, adjusted mill will be, the increase in the mill, and it's a four point three, two percent increase over the current one. So, I just want to make sure everybody had this. This takes into consideration the two hundred and eighty-four thousand and change that they put in for revenue. Does seem like we expect a little more coming forward, but that is still not even comfortable enough to even want to put it in there, so I think this gives us a good idea of where we are and so forth like that and lets, lets everyone see what's, as we move forward and that. Any questions on that? And here again, the town meeting is Monday.
Monday.
At, at high school, so all of us will be there.
I won't be there.
Except Bill won't be there.
I'll be out of town.
Okay, the, the last thing we have is the dispatchers contract, but what I thought I would do is we would do ex officio at all our other reports first, then go into executive session, discuss the contract and then come back out and vote on it. That way, once we get done with all our stuff, then we can take off. Is there any problem, any concern with that?
That works.
Okay, so ex officio, Roseanne, we'll start with you.
Okay, fairly light month so far. Zoning Commission held a public hearing regarding the project proposed building on Main Street. There was a very large turnout for that, standing room only, around the room, and a large number of speakers, majority of them against, but several who spoke in favor of it as well. So, it was good that the public turned out to express their opinions, but the developer met the requirements under special, special permit, and so really at that point, there wasn't much that could be done. But I think that the number of people that showed up for the public hearing and the number of people that spoke, I think that it put the zoning commission on alert that there is a big public concern about development and large development in this town. So, that's my only ex officio for this week.
Okay. Dan?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Anne, you covered water and sewer for me.
Yeah, water and sewer, which was April twenty-fifth. So, first it was a public hearing on supplemental sewer assessments, three owners out of eighteen did have some objection to their particular assessments. And it, once we got into our meeting and that was an agenda item, the decision was made that more information was necessary, particularly conversations that these individuals have had in meetings with Ben North, our utilities engineer, and some of the homeowners wanting to give more information, so that'll be, you know, moved to our next agenda. Water meter project continues very successfully, we have almost five thousand so far that have been installed, forty, seventy-three percent of total have been remetered, so that, that's great. Two, two big items that we handled that evening of the twenty-fifth is adoption of the water operating budget for FY twenty-four and the same for the sewer department, so on these, on the water side, a five percent increase there. The Boston Post Road tank rehabilitation, that was an ARPA project, right? And they just, it's just about finished and will come online very soon.
And, and somewhat under budget, so.
Yes, yes, which is pretty remarkable, not a grand amount, but it's, it's not over budget, which is remarkable for the times.
Which is what we were, going into that, we were really concerned about that.
Yes, because we didn't know what they would find. So, and a last item for water and sewer is making, the, the commission wants to make it a priority to address the issue of adding to or increasing sewer capacity, so there'll probably be a subcommittee forum, some research into that, so, so that'll be a main topic of conversation in the months ahead. So, that was one meeting, I had, I had a doubleheader Monday night where I had library at seven, but I had Board of Education, they had a special meeting, I'll cover that first because they met at six, so I went to that and then the next day I was able to watch the rest of their meeting, but, but it was actually a very good meeting on the middle school, there's been a middle school study on concerning that transition between grade four and grade five. And I didn't know this, but I guess, and this is true, and Kevin, you probably have seen this in your data when you served on, on Board of Education, but there's a drop in test scores, you know, between four and five particularly, if, I guess, you, you go to a middle school and, and, you know, you have a change in locale. So, there was a study undertaken and at that, at the middle school, and so what's come of it is basically ensuring a number of events happen between, you know, all kinds of welcoming and connect, connectivity type of events between the end of fourth grade and going into fifth grade. And that calendar and that is up on the website, I actually checked that, so, so for parents to see all these different things that will be happening and plan for them. And then more, perhaps more, more importantly, there's a new schedule for the middle school students for fifth grade and there will be longer periods of time for both English and, and mathematics. Mathematics is where the drop is seen most, most predominantly, and this is looking at our DURG too, I guess, okay? So, that was very interesting. And also speaking of middle school, Jason Bitgood will be retiring and.
Exactly.
Yeah, Claudine Kelly, who is an, who is an assistant principal, will be interim principal. Other, financially, Mariana said that doesn't look like any disaster between now and the end of the year for, you know, causing some deficit, so that, that was good news. There was a working sheet that the members were, were, have been continuing to use to come up with a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction that has been proposed, and it looks like no, you know, no teachers affected, you know, so that was a positive thing. But again, that's still ongoing. Last, lastly, non-lapsing account is under consideration and I, some other towns have done this with their boards of education to sort of carry over unused funds so that if they find themselves in potential deficit situation in the, in that, in that year, the next year, they can utilize that funding. So, that's something I think that would probably have to come before us too, it's hard to say, I'm not sure of the process, but it's, it's, it's been, you know, a tack taken of late by a number of districts.
How is that, what is it called?
So, it's called a non-lapsing account.
Non-lapsing?
Basically a savings account.
So, basically, yeah, or like a contingency that carries over, if you will, but it's funded with the, with the dollars that aren't used by that district at the end of the year, so.
So, in other words, they wouldn't give money back to the general fund, back to town.
It's really an incentive for them. Because I don't remember them ever giving us money back at the end of the year.
Actually, they do on a.
We just don't necessarily hear about it, yeah.
I mean, between, oh, going back to like two thousand seventeen, we've given three million plus back, they've given over a million back, so, you know, and here again, when you think about, you know, over five years, that's not a ton every year, but.
No, but it's something, and it's, and it's a good thing.
Smooth the bumps.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and I think, I think towns, like the town side of towns have to come up with a plan and find that, that it's acceptable, you know, whatever those terms are, but that'll be coming down the pike. Last thing for them, baseball field will be used at the end, it will be used on last game or a couple of games and then for the playoffs. So, that was, that was a positive piece of news there. And then, last thing I had was library Board of Trustees, they have a self-checkout machine now that, that's been installed and will be utilized, you know, it will help with the summer traffic. The new conference room, so you may remember that ARPA funds were being used for the very nice glass door and owl camera, so they've got furniture in there, they've got a large screen monitor that has the owl camera built into it, and the policy for using that room will be the same as for using the East Line room, not for fundraising events, but basically for the public otherwise. They had a great concert, Steve Katz, the Library Foundation sponsored that event, it was about two, two Saturdays ago, very, very successful, it was, I mean, I went to it, but it was, I mean, wall to wall, you know, it was very, very nice. So, that's it for me, any questions, Sam? That's a lot, I know, my stuff just came at once, my meetings, so.
Anne?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, Bill?
No meetings since our last meeting?
Okay.
That's great.
Okay, to report to, last weekend was the kickoff for the Niantic Playhouse, Annie Junior, which a lot of our young performers acted in, it was really good, I went Saturday night, it was both Friday night, the matinee Saturday and Saturday night, we're all sellouts, I'm not sure about Sunday, but it was a really good time, a lot of people there, so it was nice to see that too. A little, the week before that was opening of Little League, which was a lot of fun. It's fun to go to that, you see all the kids, it was a cool, overcast day, but they all had a good time, and that was also the same day of the Boardwalk Five K, which this year had six hundred and thirty-six walkers, runners, which is the rec, is the highest they've ever had, so, you know, in spite of the weather too. Last week on the twenty-sixth, you saw we had a groundbreaking up at the Route one sixty-one, exit seventy-four project, Governor Lamont came to town and joined us for lunch at the fish market afterwards, it was a really nice time with Senator Marks, Representative Cheeseman and a few other senators and reps that were part of the Transportation Committee and so forth, so it was really nice. One thing I'll say about the project is the worst is yet to come, but they have been very responsive to some of the concerns. If we hear a concern or if they get a call for something there, if we report something to them, it's addressed as quickly as possible. Maybe not solved, but the people are contacted and told, we're going to take a look at it and we'll get back to you. So, I haven't heard much, there was, ninety-five was backed up in a couple of days, people said, I thought this was nice, separate projects. That was a separate project altogether, obviously too, and then a couple of weeks ago, the accident, tragic accident, I'm so sorry to, you know, sadly someone lost their life, but, you know, the plans that we have for this side worked really well and, you know, it, it did cause a bit of a backup in town until our side got opened up, but again, our thoughts go out to the people that were really adversely affected by that awful incident. Route one sixty-one corridor study, that, Anne, both of you were there, Anne and Anne, you were both there last week. This is just basically, they're getting into the conceptual phase, basically from industrial park road down the rest of the road and up by the high school as well on one sixty-one. And they're looking for input from the community because they're talking about what can they do to help, you know, basically calm traffic down, widen the roads, and they did seem like they were really interested in getting the input. This is the engineering firm that's been selected by the state to come back with some ideas. Some are around about, we're Chapman Farms and, which, that didn't seem to go over too well with a lot of people, the, I think the thought did, but the fact that it, you know, really wouldn't break down traffic as much as they thought, and ways to help slow traffic down along one sixty-one, but it was a nice presentation. The Soapy Noble Gas Station, I, the owner was in here the other day, he's hoping late August. He said, maybe before, but late August is when they hope to be able to have cars go through there. We do hear also sometimes about the fact that no one can hear the audio on our mics, well, apparently there was a switch that has been turned down inadvertently at dispatch, it's not as if they know, they did it on purpose and that, but that impacts the people at home watching it. So, the simplest thing to do now, Mike Mines now has an alert on his phone, so if it's turned down, he can turn it back up from his phones. And he'll get a notice with, he said, three seconds of it being turned down. I said, okay, that's fine, because I, so let's hope that does, that takes care of And the article in New York Times, everyone heard about that, East Line is a wonderful place to be and so forth like that, which is really nice, but I was talking to a Realtor and I guess when they have an open house, not only do they monitor or count the number of people that come by, come in, they'll take a look at cars that, that qualify for doing a drive-by, stop being looking, and I guess one in some part in town, a couple weeks ago, they counted over three hundred people between coming in and driving by and make, taking a look, so, and it's, it's just a booming market right now too. Last thing, the gas station on Main Street, I know that that is going to stay a gas station. The, the pumps have been shut down because the tanks need to be replaced. The station has been sold and the new owner is planning on putting the new tanks in and basically expanding the convenience store aspect of it, which is kind of the end there, which nothing is in, the plan is right now to open that up as a, as a bigger convenience store, so that's, there's nothing else planned for that right now, nothing is going to be torn down and rebuilt, there'll probably be some renovation work, but that's it, so that's it, so. Any questions?
No, I just wanted to also make a comment, besides the article in New York Times, there's also on Boston Chronicle, ABC, there was a, like, and it was five minutes, it was usually something was like two minutes.
Yeah.
And it was five minutes and they talked about, you know, all of Niantic and they were talking about, they had showed the book barn and the beaches.
The beaches, yeah.
Everything, yeah, so.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I, and I think with, with the, you know, the, in June, I think June second is the weekend they start Murder on the Orient Express, and that will be actors coming in for that one at downtown Niantic Playhouse. They have their temporary liquor license, so, and I know several of the restaurants that are talking about dinner and the play and stuff like that, so it's going to make it a more of a destination, so. Anyway, okay, if nothing, there's no public, so what would you like to do, there's no secretary's response, so we will, like you're going into executive session?
So, move to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations between the town of East Line and local thirteen oh three dash four thirty-six, council four, AFS, CME, AFL-CIO, parentheses dispatchers. The board is entering into executive session at eight oh two P.M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll be back, we'll be back when we exit that, so.
The board had entered into executive session at eight oh two P.M. and it is returned from executive session at eight twenty-seven P.M. and no formal votes were taken. Okay, and I will. Okay, and I will, I guess our next motion is move to approve the contract between the town of East Lime and Local thirteen zero three dash four three six, Council Four, AFS, CME, AFL-CIO, dispatchers for the period July one, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Session.
Any comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sessions are carried unanimously.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, so move to adjourn, the regular meeting of May third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.